Evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the Commission. I'm Chuck Shand, Chairman of the Towns, planning and zoning Commission. This is our regular meeting, Tuesday, September 17th, 2024, in our new home away from home here. Let the record reflect that we called the meeting to order at 7:00 p.m. All regular members are present this evening and will be seated. And I thank our alternates as always for being so reliable and being here for us. What's the Commission's pleasure on the minutes number 1766 from August 20th, 2024?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as written and submitted for meeting number 1766 from August 20th, 2024.
Thank you. Ryan, a motion made to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone abstain? Anyone opposed? Chair votes aye, both matters passed. Minutes 1767 from September 4th, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as written and submitted for meeting number 1767 from September 4th, 2024.
Motion made by Ryan, thank you, Ryan, to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lynn, thank you, Lynn. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
I abstain, I was not at that meeting.
One abstention.
I abstain also, I was not there.
Two abstentions, Gary and Ryan. Chair votes aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alyssa, did you vote it?
Yes, yes.
Okay, fine, matter is passed, thank you. This is the opportunity for citizens to make comment under public comment. Evening, John.
Hey, how you doing?
Hey, I'm fine, how about you?
Good, so my name is John Crew. I was fortunate enough to sit, we're all, you're sitting for six years, and...
Thank you for your service.
Well, it's a tough job, and I genuinely mean that I know how much time and effort and goes into that. So I saw that the P O C D was on the agenda for tonight, and in discussions with numerous people that are watching land use and seeing what's going on, I was encouraged to come. And I have printouts of state law, state statutes that pertain specifically to the P O C D. And I'm gonna, before, I'm gonna pass them out, there's too much here for everybody to read, but it's all on your shoulders. It's all completely on your shoulders. And there's a number of pages here. It's been a rocky start to get going. Everybody's glad we're getting going, but the four corners of the box, I don't think, have been properly defined from what I've reviewed of your minutes and everything else. So I'm gonna, I got a copy for everybody, this, again, there's too much here to read, but it isn't 14 points, so everybody can...
Thank you, John.
...read it. I've got an extra copy for anyone who wants it. I've got one to do.
Thank you, sir.
And so, it's, I mean, I think that you've got to go away, digest this, absorb it, and understand it. And again, I think that's a rocky start, has been happened. It could easily, easily, easily be overcome going forward, but that, but not right away, not till you dig into this and see that the Commission responsibility is for everything. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, John. And I do think it's very good advice, if you haven't done it already, I think most of us are very familiar with it, I know I am, and I, and you're right, the prosecution of, of the work and the preparation of the plan is the Commission's responsibility, or a subcommittee that it delegates certain tasks to. And that is also in the statute. Other things that are in the statute are, we can bring on consultants to assist us. And, and it's, it's wise to be mindful of, of that statute and every aspect of it. So if you're not familiar with it, it is very good advice that you've been given to read it. I am very familiar with it.
No, no, and just to summarize quickly, is you can outsource some of the stuff, but you cannot outsource the public hearing, you cannot outsource the secondary stuff that's going to, when, when it, there's words in, that are written down, and people can agree or disagree, that's when the heavy lifting, and there's not going to be time to do a wholesale edit at that point. So you want to guide, if you choose to outsource, which we did in 2014 for the 2015, and there was a consultant in 2004, you want to have that oversight constantly, so you don't get a document you wholesale want to edit.
Also good advice. So if you're not familiar with it, heed that advice, and read every line of it, and reread it, because there's a lot in there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Well, may I just ask, John, why did he even start in a rocky start? I mean, I'd like to know.
You know, I, I'm not going for one second assigned motive, I go as, and, you know, Keith Bryans had been here for a number of years. We've got a very capable planner now, there was a change, there was a transition. You know, things fall through the cracks. No, no, no fingerprint, no fingerprint at all. We just, we just move forward as a town, and, but, you know, I was, I was caught into a conversation of, why doesn't the Commission just do what they need to do? And I was quickly reminded, because it's never been presented to you. And so...
Well, in fairness, in fairness to the Commission, the money to, to do the P O C D was not appropriated. So, you know, it, it was just appropriated, the money to do the P O C D. So in fairness, it's not like anyone was sitting on their laurels, not doing their job. The money was not appropriated until this budget cycle. So it's, you know, it was never, we never really could start it, because there was no money appropriated to hire a consultant.
Yeah, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So Chuck, is our plan to take time out of one of our meetings to discuss it as a condition, how we want to go forward?
Absolutely. We will get an update tonight from Clifton, and I think, I think the Commission has to roll up its sleeves at every one of its meetings from this point forward, it's a regular agenda item. And the whole discussion of what we give to a subcommittee and how we charge a subcommittee will be the first discussion.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Pam?
Yeah, for the record, thank you, good evening to all of you. I just wanted to reiterate what, what Mr. Crew said, but also to carry it a little further, and, yeah, the money has been appropriated for a consultant, to hire a consultant, and an R F P has been sent out, is, it's my understanding, to hire a consultant, but the Commission has never, has never decided that it needs a consultant, or, you know, what the parameters would be for hiring a consultant, or what it would be, can we do right off the bat, or further down the road, once maybe a subcommittee has done some work? So I think, I, I think that what needs to happen, that the Commission needs to walk back a bit, it's not just a matter of, you know, everything's fine now. I think that it's, it's gotta be up to the Commission how to move forward, if there even is a consultant.
I, I totally agree, it's clearly not the chair's decision, it's, it's, it's a decision for, for the Board. We're gonna get an update on the R F P. Ideally, it would have been presented to the Commission before it was advertised. It's written very broadly, fortunately, and, and it's the Board's decision on next steps.
Very good.
But thank you very much, Pam, appreciate it. Anyone else wish to comment on, under this item? Well, thank you both for your comments, much appreciated. Next item on the agenda is correspondence, item five. Clifton?
Nope.
Item six, reports, and we've reached the Plan of Conservation and Development update on the R F P. You should have all received a copy of the R F P in your package.
Mr. Chairman, I'll keep it brief. What was provided in the packet for tonight, and what was posted online, was the R F P that was submitted and put out on July 15th, 2024, and closed on August 15th, 2024. I also provided a copy of the town's procurement policy as it relates to R F Ps in part of the memorandum, and then just did a brief, one pager. I don't want to describe the entire process of the P O C D and how it works, I don't think that's relevant necessarily for tonight. But I just will say that, you know, looking in the background and coming in halfway through this process, which has been probably halfway through this process, I started my role as the town planner in May of 2023. By that time, we have, we had already allocated money towards the funding of a P O C D with an outside consultant, that started in the 2021, 2022 fiscal year. Money's been set aside steadily over that period, as part of the last fiscal year's budget that was adopted, I was completing the process for, you know, requesting that money through our SIP program, so just continuing a process that's already been well started and well funded and well knowledge by the community. I think the Commission is well aware that, especially given some of the participation on the Board of Finance in the past, that many people are aware of, you know, how that funding cycle works, how you have to take multiple years to fund something as large as a P O C D effort, especially as a consultant. So I don't want to get into the, necessarily, the past funding cycles, because those were prior to my time, but basically what I've provided is the R F P just for your review. And basically, our process looking forward is, you know, again, with the consensus of the Commission, is to continue an already well-developed procurement policy that's consistent with not only our town's requirements and our charter, but also state requirements. So what I'm looking for, hopefully, out of tonight, is just answering any comments, questions, concerns you might have. Preceding with the R F P as written and as closed, I have received the documents from the respective consultants that have submitted to the R F P, they still remain sealed, I've been waiting for the Commission's blessing and guidance to continue that process. Basically, just answer any questions you have tonight. One thing I did want to do, after speaking with the Chair after the last meeting, was to reach out to our town attorney, see if there were any questions and concerns with what has been developed as part of the R F P, and what our policy and process and procedure is. So I'm gonna distribute the town attorney's opinion I received today. I have a couple extra copies that are gonna stand by you, Lynn, in case members of the public want to read that, but I'd like to read it into the record if you have a moment. I'll wait till everybody gets it, so. And then if there are not enough copies, obviously, I'll be able to circulate those to anyone, but, Mr. Chairman, would you mind if I read this?
You want to bet off of?
Yes, I got it.
Okay, thank you, John.
I know Carl, we've gone a long way.
Okay. So just for the record, I'm gonna read the letter, so it's, Dear Cliff, this letter is in response to the town and Commission's request for some clarification on the process and procedure for adopting and affirming the town's plan of conservation and development. The questions appear to focus on which entity populates and appoints subcommittees to undertake the updating and ratification of the P O C D, and what entities secure and choose expert consultants that may assist the Commission in their responsibilities under General Statutes 8-23. In answering these inquiries, I offer the following. Pursuant to General Statute 8-23(c), the Planning and Zoning Commission is the entity to appoint, select, and populate any special committees and subcommittees that the Commission wishes to utilize in its charge in adopting the P O C D over the next 10 years. Additionally, the Commission has the ability to accept information from any source or solicit input from any organization or individual. The acceptance of information and solicitation of input is separate and distinct from the proper procedures and processes for retaining and paying for expert consultants. In securing an expert consultant for assisting the Commission, the town must follow its procurement ordinances, procedure, and policy. General Statute 8-23 does not give unilateral authority to the Commission to hire any expert or consultant. When spending taxpayer dollars, there is a proper procedure and policy in place to ensure that the most qualified person at the best price is secured. The Commission should have some role in observing the process, since the retained expert is going to be working directly with them, but the procurement ordinances and procedure dictate which person will be awarded the contract to perform those services. In sum, while the Commission has the authority to establish subcommittees to assist them in their charge and to receive information and input from any organization or individual, this does not extend to the hiring and procurement of any specific individual or entity. The formal process of contracting with and paying an expert and consultant must be done through the town's purchasing ordinances. Very truly yours, Jeffrey T. Long, your town attorney. So what I provided is just the town attorney's opinion on the situation. I believe we're still following all relevant processes and procedures as it pertains to putting out the R F P, soliciting input, and determining a consultant. As I stated, the R F Ps that I've received still remain sealed, so they have not been opened. I've been waiting until this meeting to receive guidance from the Commission on the subject. I'd like to move forward with the town's procurement policy as already written, and go through that process, in which case I intend to establish a selection committee that would help do that. So that, again, everything aligned with our current procedure and policy, and I'll leave it at that, happy to answer any questions.
Clifton, could you just explain when the plan is due, and, and the fact that the town can obtain a waiver?
Correct.
Because we're obviously not going to be ready in time. And that's not infrequent, that waivers are, are routinely granted, and, but could you just go through that?
Sure. So our, our plan of conservation and development per statute, it should be adopted in May of next year, that 10-year deadline limit. One of the items that I would hope the Commission would alongside potential selected consultant do, first thing would be to apply for that waiver, basically give us extra time, because we are proceeding towards the development of a new P O C D. So we are allowed to elapse, as long as we get that waiver from the state. So that would be probably one of the first processes after the Commission decides how they want to approach subcommittee selection committees, steering committees, with the consultant at once hired. So I think that would be, you know, the first discussion that you guys would have at that time.
The P O C D is important, and I know that this is as much for the benefit of the audience, the, the P O C D is a document that's filed with O P M, and O P M is, is like the executive side of, of the budgeting authority for the, for the state of Connecticut. And in order to receive state funding, you have to maintain good standing with the current P O C D. So again, there is a waiver process, I don't want to create a, a bunch of hysteria that all of a sudden the state funds are gonna be shut off to the town. Many municipalities are in the same situation and routinely request waivers. I have no reason to believe we will not get one, but time is of the essence. So, you know, delays in this process are not viewed, are looked upon favorably if they can be avoided. So the current status of the responses that have been filed to the R F P is that they are secured and unopened, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And they should remain in that state until the Board makes a decision on, on what they're comfortable doing with it.
I have a couple of questions. So, Clifton, how did you select the consulting companies that you sent our P to?
I didn't.
Okay. How were they selected?
So our procurement policy is a established procedure where, basically, the R F P is, is posted, we post it on a website, our finance director might post it in other locations, you know, based on the procurement policy, I'm not gonna speak on his behalf on how it's sent out. But basically, what we do is, we keep it open for a period of time, typically 30 days, which is what we did. So we put out the R F P as written on July 15th, closed it on August 15th. All, all consultants that wanted to submit a proposal had to get it in by that time. And then from that point, the process closes, all the submissions are sealed, and then they're awaiting the opening of a selection committee at the time of going through an interview process.
And how many, how many responses do we get?
I don't, I don't believe I have to share that according to the procurement policy.
Okay, you can't share it? Okay.
Not until they're, not until they're sealed and unsealed and opened.
Obviously, okay.
There, there is a, a certain amount of concern about, about Q B S, quality-based selection, and it's, it's a sensitive transaction for the town, or any public agency, because they're not, you don't rip and read bids, and some parties instantaneously are low bidder, and they win the job if they're qualified.
Right.
This is all qualitative, and these are frequently audited heavily, you know, by the town's auditors, and they have to be performed meticulously. Traditionally, until a selection is made, all the information is confidential, but all agencies have different, I'm not exactly sure what the town's rules are in it, but if this were a federal R F P and quality-based selection, until the selection panel votes and awards the contract, any of the proceedings are not subject to F O I or any other person outside the selection board knowing what's going on. That's, that's how the Fed handles things, under the Federal Opposition Regulation so far.
Okay.
I'm not sure what the town rules are, you know, the executive staff can speak for themselves, the person that would answer those questions is the Director of Finance. He administers the procurement policy for the town.
I've been to R F P processes before, but never for the town. My, is there, does the town have a blacklist, or a, a list of, of consulting firms for this purpose that they automatically will not use?
Again, that's a question for the Director of Finance, I don't, I don't know that so.
I think traditionally, you know, again, if you, if you look at general practice, there's a legal advertisement, and the legal advertisement is generally all you do, you know, you don't reach out, because that, that might be viewed as currying favor. And anything that curries favor for one, one respondent or another has to be avoided.
Okay.
Good questions, Lynn, thank you.
I have a, I have a question, a comment.
Yes.
Thanks, thank you. You know, I read that the town attorney's opinion, and he didn't at all talk about 822. And 822 does actually say, the engagement of a consultant is up to the Commission only by majority vote. And it's, it's pretty black and white, it says, the Commission may engage such employees or, or contract with professional consultants, the action of the Commission shall be taken only upon the vote of a majority of the Commission, of the members, and then it says, you know, with the expenditures, shall be within the amounts appropriated for its purposes. So we have an amount that's been appropriated, and to me, this is fairly, unless the, unless I mean, this is fairly black and white, that if the selection of the consultant is 100% up to us.
I'm sorry, you're reading that as 100% up to us?
To proceed with the selection, no, you're saying, we're not picking, meaning the P O C D, we would not pick the actual consultant.
But that's what this says, we do.
No, it says we, if I understand it, it's saying we can actually start that process, but we are not the ones that actually make that choice, if I'm reading it correctly.
So we're reading it different, because I read it to say, the Commission may engage such employees, that's, we're engaging them.
We can reach out, employees, and they can start the R F P process, as I read it, but...
And, and we can, you know, and it's up to us, as, as a Commission, to pick the, pick the consultant. And that's, I mean, maybe it's diff, maybe we're all reading this a little bit different.
Yeah, I don't...
And maybe we need the town attorney's take on 822, because he didn't mention that at all in his opinion. My, my thought on this would be to pull back a step for all of us, maybe have a special meeting, whatever, always read the R F P, see if that's what we want to put out. I don't, from what I understand, we haven't seen it, the R F P, as a Commission, haven't voted on, do we want to go this route, and look at, you know, is this how we want to go, is this the scope we want, is this the extent we want, do we want to put it out to a consultant, and all those things, and that's why I said I would take a step back. We don't have to select one of these firms, and we can just pause, take a, take a breath, pause, everyone, you know, we got the, you know, I, there was something wrong with my email, I literally got the package over the weekend, and I was out of town. And I read the R F P online, but to really take a deep look into the R F P as a Commission and talk about it as a group, before we make any decision on selecting the subcommittee to pick the firm, to, to even decide whether we want to go that route, and that, that would be my position on this.
Clifton, I have a question. So is there a time limit to the waiver on, and I know we are, you know, obviously not going to meet it, even if we proceed it, right? So if we request a waiver, how long does that grant us?
The waiver process basically will grant it until it's done, essentially. A lot of these P O C D processes are, take two, three years, four years, depending on how much public engagement you want to do, depending on the scope of services provided, depending on the consultant, depending on the time that the Commission or its appointed subcommittee or steering committee has to devote to the project. It really does depend, so just the act of getting the waiver, basically, will give us the time to work on the P O C D until it's completed.
Do we have to show anything to say, hey, okay, we're requesting waiver, but we are trying to move forward?
Working towards it.
Well, that, my point is, is there any evidence like a R F P or something? Do we have to show them something to say, here, we're making a good faith effort to move forward, but we need a waiver?
Yeah, we would, we would need to show some form of a, a good faith effort in terms of, and R F P itself is enough in that case.
Or we're having regular meetings, we've appointed a subcommittee, you know, please submit like monthly minutes for meetings, things like that.
Correct.
As long as we show them we're...
Yeah, in some cases, and other, R F Ps for other uses outside of the P O C D and outside of the Commission's purview, just the act of funding itself is enough, in saying that we have the money set aside to achieve that objective. So there is, there is the time, and, you know, we wouldn't necessarily even need to apply for a waiver before the end date of next year.
So we're okay, we've shown even already that we're, we're working towards doing it.
Correct, and so just the act of the Board of Finance allocating the money through the budget for this objective, I believe, is enough to start putting forward a waiver request.
I think, yeah.
And another question I have, I will start, go ahead.
So if the money started to be put aside in 2021, why was it, why did it start in 2021? Did the Commission at that time approve looking into a consultant for that? Was this already discussed in 2021, and that's why they, funding was put into place? Can anybody think of one for that time?
They saw it coming down the line.
Yes, yeah, because it seems like that's a lot of forethought, to be like, oh, in four years, so someone had to make that decision.
Yeah, that would, you know, that would be my predecessors, that started putting in those C I P requests during that funding cycle. And looking back on those documents, I mean, the intent is clear that this money is being signed to hire an expert consultant to complete the P O C D, in line with what was done the past two cycles of the P O C D with the Commission. So it's just been a well-established procedure and funding stream that has been slowly added to over time. Obviously, all of those budgetary hearings are public record and knowledge, too, for every, you know, resident to participate in. So I believe that not only my staff and my predecessors have been moving forward towards this objective since at least 2021, but the Commission has as well, just through the...
How does the appropriation read? Does it read for a consultant? And, and I know that the prior Chair wrote a letter to the Finance Board, and, and it specifically said that the fund, that, that the town staff could not do the job, that, you know, they're, they're far too busy, far too understaffed, and, and clearly, this money was needed for a consultant. So that, that memo does exist.
I think what would be really helpful is to understand the history of how the, how the last version or the current version of the plan, how, how many hours it took, how, how much of the plan was revised from the previous plan, et cetera. I think that that's going to be very important to understand as we, as we go forward and set a course of action. And I'm not sure anybody... And I'm not sure anybody on the commission has that information. And so I don't know, Clifton, how that would be obtained, but I think that that's really important because sometimes these things get kind of a surface review. And we're in a very critical spot right now, critical time in rewriting our regs where we're constantly referring to the plan of conservation and development. So I just feel as if it would be very good information to have as we plot forward.
I only have a brief summary that was provided back in 2020, 2021 as part of the CIP. I'll distribute this around. But basically, the notes from the previous Director of Planning at the time stated that in the development of the 2013, 2014 POCD, the previous one, the Planning and Zoning Commission established a subcommittee and its process for doing so. The subcommittee met twice a month to work on the update of the plan, using the ideas and input received, three working sessions, public meetings were held to develop key strategies for each of the planned topics. That was done in consultation with a consultant group. So the consultant was specifically hired only to do the work associated with the public engagement and then processing and filtering through the responses. It goes on, the notes go on to say that the subcommittee members themselves drafted specific chapters of the plan, updating and reorganizing information from the 2004 plan and consolidating it into a document. The way that looks to me and the way that looks to the planning staff is that the 2014 POCD effort was basically an update of the 2004 plan. It was a very minimal scale, minimal effort work instead of a larger scale consulting effort where you bring in a whole team, where you do a lot of robust public engagement strategy. And this was more of a, let's update the existing plan, make minimal changes over time in iterations, and then do some public engagement work so we check that box. That's the way that.
That is exactly how I remember it going. It was minimal. It did not have a lot of open public discussion, certainly before the commission itself. And so I think we need to understand that it's really been two revisions back before there's been an in-depth look. And are we comfortable with that? Are we satisfied?
And do we have enough money for it?
Right, to go forward.
And so the intent and what was starting to be funded back in that first fiscal year in 21, 22 was towards this larger goal of, let's do the full-scale effort. Let's get a consulting team in. Let's get a robust public engagement plan, policy in place to develop this and then have them work for the commission in developing that plan and process. So what's submitted in the RFP outlines just specifically that, what's been working for the past, or what we've been working towards for the past couple of years is really, let's get a firm in place, let's transition the process as it historically and is statutorily required to go to the commission, and then the commission directs the consultant on specifically what they want to do. So that's the way the RFP was set up. That's the way it's going to act once the firm is selected. We just go through our standard procurement policy in order to select that firm and then the reins go back over. So the money's been set aside. We carry the buck in terms of getting the money here. And then we get the firm and then hand the reins back over as statutorily required.
So we have kind of a full agenda here tonight. It's been suggested that we basically look at this in more detail before we move forward. And I'd like to get my arms around, if we can, the issues that, you know, I think you bring up a very good point, and that is maybe understand the history better so that we understand the details that this may focus on, which may help to refine the scope.
So I was on the commission in 2022.
Hang on just one sec, okay? Is that what you were implying when you made your earlier statement?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Please, go ahead.
I was on the commission in 2004, when that first big one was done. It was a tremendous amount of work for the commission. We did, we hired Planometrics was the consultant that we brought in to do it at the time. And we met with them, there was a subcommittee that met with them outside of the commission time, I think once or twice a month. Then there were subcommittees of the subcommittee.
A major rewrite is a lot of work and it involves workshops and public engagement. And we also should have a very carefully crafted plan of public engagement that we need as well. So what is the commission's pleasure on this for this evening?
If I could ask, just out of curiosity, Clifton, so you put the RFP out, you have the responses, they're sealed. There's no time limit that we have to respond or is there the usual time that we would?
There's usually a timeframe established. That's something that I'll have to ask the Finance Director.
Okay. So I don't want to put us in a position where we have to go all the way back to ground zero if we're in a position where we can maybe have a meeting in the interim.
I don't have the answer to that tonight. I think the decision may have an impact, who knows? But I'll be able to answer.
Okay.
But there is something in the RFP or in the procurement that we don't have to accept any of them. We can just nix the whole thing and start from scratch. I'm not saying we're going to do that, right? But if we decide we want to.
None of us can say that on our own, right?
No, 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 I'm not saying, but I'm just saying sort of hypothetically, right? There's nothing that says we can't either just decline to pick one of the firms or officially rescind the RFP? I write a lot of, that's why I write a lot of RFPs at work and we always have that clause in there. We hold the, you know, we keep them, right?
That would be the responsibility of town staff in order to do something with this.
Would it make sense for this group to, say, continue this discussion and schedule a separate meeting specifically go over this? Because this is going to, this is going to take, at least the questions I'm hearing is going to take some time.
I think it's going to take a focused session.
So I think we need to do that.
I think what we ought to do, though, is please feed into me what your questions are so that we can have a meeting, a proper agenda, and go through it. Because I am concerned that we are sitting on an unopened RFP. Rescinding it will send a strange message to the marketplace. As you know, from your frequent, I mean, you know, interested consultants get these things back and they're saying, what is this? You know? But if that's the commission's decision, then that's the commission's decision and that's what we'll do. But if, on the other hand, it's written broad enough and the commission can get its arms around it and we can work with it to come up with a basis for the selection of the most qualified consultant, then I think that's the preferred solution. But the commission has to get comfortable with it. And I do think it's wise to have a single meeting focused solely on that where we can make that decision. And we should try to schedule that as soon as we possibly can.
Thank you.
I know it's difficult to get space these days, but we're coming into a busy time of the year for everybody, but we've got to make time. And on top of all the other meetings that we have scheduled, we've got to make time for this. So.
Yeah, I think it'd be, if that's the commission's pleasure, I think it'd be very useful and pertinent to staff to know what are we even doing at said meeting.
Yeah. That's why, that's why I'm saying.
The RFP has been.
That's a job for us to come up with that agenda. And I think we have quite a bit of it already that we're going to be looking for. And I would ask you to feed back your comments to me so that it's a meaningful session.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a suggestion and maybe just to kind of try to move things along a bit? Can we set some time limits on feedback and say, okay, in the next couple of weeks, if people can take that time, two weeks to provide the feedback to you? And if we can schedule within the next month, you know, so we don't lose traction?
Correct. Some are just getting this, some are just getting this tonight.
Right.
So I think, but I think two weeks is a good time for it. And try to schedule, try to schedule that session. Well, that meeting will have to be noticed with the Secretary of State, correct? It'll involve a call under the commission, so it'll have to be, it's a meeting.
We'll treat it like any other special meeting.
Yeah, okay. All right, so two weeks from tonight, please feed back your comments and questions and we'll staff a meeting to address those comments and questions and further discuss next steps.
Thank you.
Everybody happy with that?
Need to make a motion, is that all we need? Does that command?
Okay. I don't think we need a motion on that, do we, Clifton?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, Clifton. Reports from anyone else on the commission or discussion? No, Chairman, there's no report. Zoning enforcement and violations, I know your packet had an item in there for this. Any questions on any of the individual enforcement actions? And nothing under administrative review, correct, Clifton?
Nope.
Okay. Okay, under old business. And my understanding is that we have one member who was not present for the full public hearing on this. So in this case, Alyssa will.
Alyssa?
I'm sorry, how do you pronounce it?
Alyssa.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That's the second time you've corrected me on that, I apologize.
That's okay. I do it early enough, then after a couple of years, we'll get it.
Yes, yes. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Will not be seated for this. You're free to ask questions, obviously. But Mary Ellen will vote on this matter as she was present for all the previous sessions on this. So the first item under old business is J&amp;H Hospitality LLC. I don't believe Attorney Casey is present tonight, but there's no public discussion on this. You recall at the last meeting that we closed the public hearing, there were questions on the timing of the traffic study and some other issues. I guess we should ask, there was going to be an effort, I think, to reach out to the Traffic Commission? And was that done and what was the results?
That's correct. Following the close of the public hearing at the last meeting, one of the outstanding items on the table was the Police Commission was going to be reconvening on its meeting on September 12 to rediscuss some incoming concerns from neighboring properties regarding both the traffic study and parking-related issues. So they were going to reconvene, have another discussion and look at the project again. And that meeting did, at the meeting again, the Police Commission found no concerns regarding public safety, traffic or parking. The chairman noted that there was a, felt the project was a very positive improvement to the area. So that was really the one outstanding item. And then the rest is just for the commission to deliberate on the application as it stands.
Thank you, Clifton. So what is the commission's pleasure on the application of J&amp;H Mystic Hospitality?
Mr. Chairman, so just to confirm, I think we need three decisions, correct? Decision concerning the waivers, decision, pardon me, concerning the camp, and a decision on the special use permit, correct?
Correct.
Should we do them separately or?
They can do them all in one.
Okay.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
The other thing that we were waiting on is whether or not there was any sort of formalized agreement on the parking? If you had found anything that.
With the neighbor, right?
Yes, with the neighbor, because that dictated how many spots realistically were for both the hotel and the restaurant.
You are correct.
Good. So, yes, I did discuss that and I received an agreement between the property owner of the adjacent property and the Mystic Diner, that they have an agreement to utilize and share those spaces. Basically, as the adjacent parcel sits and with the hotel being closed, there's an acceptance of additional parking just because that use isn't being fully utilized. What I told that, what I told the adjacent property owner is when you come back for a future update to the property, any sort of site plane special use permit, that contract becomes void. He stated that they have a year agreement at a time and it's not automatically renewed. So it's something that they could civilly agree each year.
So that's a, at least to your, in your perspective, answer the question that we had.
It didn't pose a problem to either property from our regulations perspective. So it was just a civil agreement between two property owners or two users, in which case we wouldn't regulate, so.
Were there also a question on the shared parking model between the restaurant and the hotel?
So there's a, the applicant requested and provided a shared parking analysis for 152 spaces. So that's what's been submitted as part of the project. I think the public discussion in the public hearing kind of really focused on how those numbers were derived and whether or not they were sufficient. The commission wanted more time to deliberate and discuss and determine whether or not that shared parking analysis was sufficient, but that's what's been provided.
Were there also some questions about the number of occupants of the restaurant? I think those were clarified. I saw in your memo where you said those were addressed, right? Okay.
Yep, the outdoor seating component was.
Correct.
Was calculated and accounted for.
So those questions have been addressed. Thank you, Clifton.
So in terms of parking, we just have to decide if we are okay with their shared calculation. And that's totally up to us. We're not the few people who are voting.
Correct. That's the commission's deliberation. You know, the traffic body being the Police Commissioner, Police Commission obviously weighed in on that. But whether or not that the commission accepts the shared parking arrangement or the one that's required just by the normal parking standards, that would be up to your discussion tonight.
And what's the difference in number if we just said straight off, no part shared parking? They provide 150-something, right?
They provide 152, I believe the.
That was like 180-something.
180-something.
Was it 180-something?
185.
180.
Five is required, 152.
I'm asking the applicant, Pete's in the back, so. But I think it was in the 180s.
Yeah, I thought it was.
It's in their parking analysis and what's required.
There were a couple of other things on this application. They were discharging the stormwater into an existing detention basin on state property, which to me, you know, is a very difficult thing to get a permit to do. But I think that's out of our hands. I don't think they can apply for a permit until it has all the local approvals. And the letter from DOT has said that. So I don't think we can speculate on whether they can get that or not. I think it's going to be a heavy lift, but if they don't get it, they're back to us for something different. You know, an onsite detention or onsite reaching or something like that to compensate for the loss of storage on state property. But I don't see anything else in the, your comments, the Police Commission's comments, building department didn't have any, or a zoning enforcement officer or fire marshal that are unresolved at this point.
I did want to, two clarifications if I could. So is there a height variance for this property?
The special use permit covers the height. There's no variance.
Okay, so what is the total height of the? Because I'm looking at this eagle. Building height, you part 50 divided 55?
55. So they can go up to 65 with the special use permits and they're proposing 55. So part of this special use permit, which is required anyways, is to cover that additional height.
A 5.
Of 55 feet, which is 5 over the.
5 over.
It's all a man jacked to them obstructing their view of 95.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And then the variance associated with the highway sign, the sign that faces the highway.
The non-conforming?
That's a variance that.
There's no variance there, it's just a non-conforming sign. So it's allowed to remain in place as is, as the sign also is on Route 27, those are allowed to remain even though they're non-conforming as long as they don't increase.
Okay, but the Architectural Review Board, I think, indicated they wanted the sign changed, didn't they?
They wanted the signs on the buildings changed, or they wanted the colors of the signs to reflect the change to the architectural exterior. And then they wanted to know whether or not that those signs on the structure themselves were going to be lit or not.
And the answer was?
There's a lighting on the ones on the structure, but the ones that are off the property are not lit. So the existing tall sign that's closer to the highway. property are not lit, so the existing tall sign that's closer to the highway, that's not currently going to be lit as part of this.
Okay, because I was pretty sure that I asked that question.
You did.
And I was pretty sure that they said that they, lighting on the, the signs on the building, they weren't going to be like lit signs, they were going to be, maybe have a, you know, like a landscaping light on them, but they were not going to be lit, and now are we saying they are lit?
Nothing has changed between what's been presented before and now, and so...
Okay, but, so, they did say very clearly that they were not going to be lit signs.
Not like neon, internally.
Yeah, they're not internal.
Or the sign itself does not have a light on it, okay. And then my, I think the Architectural Review Board also stated that they wanted the legs, remove the metal legs that rise from the sidewalk up to the sign. It's number two on the review board.
Correct. That's in reference to the facade of the entryway structure.
Oh, okay, not one that's closed to Route 27?
That's regarding the structure itself.
Thank you.
I just want to reiterate, just struck me that meeting with the owner or the president of Mystic Village, how concerned about the parking he was, and how he said it was a welcome addition to that area to increase, you know, the hotel, to make it nicer, but he was really concerned about the parking situation, how there really were people using his lot from across the street, and he had great concerns about adding more, and that really addressing the parking.
Their lawyer was present, correct?
Yeah.
Correct. Any other comments or questions from the commission? Any further discussion on this application? What's the commission's pleasure on the application of J&amp;H Mystic Hospitality LLC?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the application as submitted concerning the, to approve the waivers requested, to also approve the CAM application and the special use permit application with the following stipulations. One, the applicant shall address outstanding comments to the satisfaction of the town engineer and town planner. Two, any proposed alterations or modifications to the approved site plan as a result of comments from the Connecticut Department of Transportation, CDOT, or Office of State Traffic Administration, OSTA, shall be subject to review and approval by the town engineer and town planner and commission as necessary. Three, final plans shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town engineer and town planner. Four, final plans shall be signed by the commission and recorded in the town's land evidence records. And five, the application shall post an erosion and sedimentation control bond prior to the issuance of a zoning permit. The bond shall be either in the form of a certified check or a revocable lever of credit meeting the requirements of ZR 15 dot 4 dot 3. The bond amount shall be established by the town engineer after an estimate of the cost of installing and maintaining appropriate erosion and sedimentation control measures is provided by the applicant and approved by the town engineer. Work shall remain bonded for a minimum of one year from the date of zoning compliance.
Motion to approve by Ryan, the special permit, the waivers, and the CAM application with four stipulations, five stipulations, which he read into the record, and I won't bother repeating. Thank you, Ryan, is there a second?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Gary, thank you, Gary. All in favor of the motion to approve the special permit, the CAM application, and the requested waivers in the packet?
Aye.
Okay, Chair votes aye. Anyone opposed?
Opposed.
I oppose.
You're opposed also? Okay. Then the motion does not pass. The application is denied. I'm sorry.
You have to vote one in.
Is there, let me just ask this question, and this is kind of a Robert's Rules, it's the motion fails, but we now have to entertain a motion to deny?
Correct.
Okay.
With or without prejudice.
Do they have to state on the record in motion, you know, a reason to deny?
You can deny with or without prejudice, so that would be the...
And just to clarify, the without prejudice, which one is the one that gives them more options to come back?
Without prejudice, they can come back.
Okay, everybody's fine. Then, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to deny the application by J&amp;H Mystic Hospitality without prejudice.
Is that all, CAM application, special permit, and waivers?
Correct, all three.
So a motion made to deny the special permit, the CAM application, and the requested waivers is denied, thank you, Ryan, without prejudice, and again, that means that the applicant can, with a substantial modification, the application can come in before a year. Is there a second to that motion?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Gary, thank you, Gary. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I'm opposed.
I'm opposed as well. Any abstentions? Then the motion to deny is approved. Moving on to the next item under old business, this is a bond release or reduction to Secaroli LLC. The applicant appeared before us at the last meeting, and do we have to act on this tonight?
Yes.
Yeah, we do.
Okay. Okay. Can, can he speak in, under old business on this? Okay. That's right, because there was a public hearing on the previous one, I'm sorry.
If it so pleases the commission, I'm speaking on behalf of my client, Mr. Secaroli.
Yes, you're recognized, thank you, introduce yourself, you know, we all know you.
For the record, Sergio Trenzia with Trenzia and Associates, offices at 99 Mechanic Street, Pawtucket, Connecticut. I prepared the permits for Mr. Secaroli, the site plan, majority of which has been constructed and is the site for Go Fish Restaurant, run by Mr. Kadama. That site, for the most part, has been stabilized, there are some lingering issues, some site stormwater features that still need to be constructed. We applied on Mr. Secaroli's behalf to get a bond reduction. I believe that bond reduction was requested to be reduced to $3,958, based on an estimated remaining work to be done. We, since then, Mr. Secaroli has met with the town engineer, and they agreed on an amount of $7,500, after I ran the bond estimate, that amount actually came out to $7,494.8, just how the numbers worked out, based on the items that are still outstanding for erosion control measures for the remaining items to be constructed on that site. The reason why my client does not want to execute those items, at least one of them, he has agreed to put in a level spreader trench on the side of the, what is now the restaurant. He hasn't gotten around to that yet, but I anticipate he'll be working on that fairly soon, and to the satisfaction of the town engineer. The, there's a rain garden next to the proposed building, which is currently only a foundation, and the reason he does not want to construct that is because he doesn't want to have to disturb that twice when that, when that building is finally constructed. However, that is not, is not being contemplated anytime soon, so instead of doing things twice, he'd like to defer that until the building is constructed and withhold this bond amount within that time, so that the town is protected. We have spoken to the town engineer, but he recently had, he was out on vacation, I believe, so I didn't get a chance to speak with him directly on this, but we did share some emails, and I believe, and I did speak with Clifton, and we're, we fully committed to getting the level spreader constructed, and the bond amount would only be released once the town engineers signed off on it, and the town planner. And I've offered my services to work with the town engineer, to inspect it, make sure it's built per plan. We have a plan in place that it does need to meet the specifications for, I've reviewed that with Mr. Secaroli, and he intends to meet those requirements, has no objection to doing it, it's just a matter of timing of getting it done, and then upon that authorization, we hope that you can stipulate the bond release this evening, based on the town's satisfaction of the town engineer and any other town staff that you desire.
Do we have anything from the town engineer, I know you said he was on vacation?
In the, in the report, I did put the email correspondence where he's in support of...
So you're happy with this arrangement?
Yep, I just added the stipulation that the level spreader is modified to the site plan's requirements.
I see, okay.
And then that's when the partial bond release would be completed.
So it sounds like all is in order, then?
I just have one question.
Yes, go ahead.
So the rain garden, that's associated with the other part of the development, did you say that that's in the unforeseen future?
We don't, I don't know when that building will be constructed, however, that bio-retention, there is a detention area there?
Yeah.
It just hasn't been built to specifications that are required, and we went out with the town engineer and Clifton, Mr. Secaroli excavated down a bit of the ways, there's some material that needs to be removed from that bio-retention area, and some, a special mix of soils needs to be put in, so instead of doing that and then going through the building construction, which we don't know when that will be, we'd rather just do that all at once. But we are, there is still an obligation under this permit to complete that per plan.
And that has no bearing on the construction that's already been completed?
No, because it's, well, it's, there is a detention area there, but there's not a roof structure, it's just a, I believe it's just a foundation right now, so it's, it's not as critical to the, but when that building is completed, that needs to be built per plan.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any further questions of the applicant's representative? Clifton, any further comments? And again, Commissioner Morrison, I believe, is seated for this, correct? Yes. What's the commission's pleasure on the request of Secaroli LLC, George Secaroli?
Mr. Chairman, I make a...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sergio. Yeah, any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the bond reduction release application as submitted with the following stipulation. One, the applicant shall modify the level spreader on-site to plan specifications to the satisfaction of the town engineer prior to the partial release of the bond.
Motion made to approve the request, subject to satisfying the town engineer. Thank you, Ryan, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Chair votes aye, matter passed. Thank you, Sergio. Next item on the agenda is an amendment to previously approved CAM application by M. Marcus. Evening, sir.
Any one second while I set up?
Good evening, commission, thank you for having me anytime tonight. My name is Seamus Moran, AP in Connecticut, I work for H&amp;H Engineering Associates, and I'm representing the applicants Mitch and M. Marcus, who are with us tonight for their property located at 28 Money Point Road. This is a CAM application, it's a site plan modification, you may remember the site if you were on the commission last year. But if you were on the commission last year, this was approved by the commission via PZC 2303 CAM for a single-family residential home, septic system, stormwater improvements, and soil erosion sediment control. What you see here is the existing conditions plan, I'll get to the approved plan in a moment, it was also approved in March of 2023 by the Army Corps for a dock, floating dock, gangway, and a Shakespeare dock as well. Lastly, one piece of, one piece I'd like to note is the prior owner who got the approvals didn't build anything, didn't want to build it, ended up selling the property, so it transferred ownership to the Markuses in September of last year, so just about a year ago. So they purchased the property, which is vacant, the Markuses live at 31 Money Point Road, that's their primary residence, which, as you see here, this is Money Point Road, their primary residence is just off this page to the southwest. What I'm going to show you on the next sheet is the previously approved site plan. This here is a previously approved site plan, what you see here, the green is the tidal wetland limit, the magenta is the coastal jurisdiction line, this is all the previously approved information, the house, the patio, the landscape wall in the back, the driveway, the septic system, generators, some grading, and a rain garden that went right to the tidal wetland limit at elevation, three was the bottom of the rain garden, which that's a little important, I'll get to that in a moment. What we're looking to do is modify, so that, if we hold this point here on the landscape wall, what we're looking to do is hold that point on the landscape wall and extend that straight across, and where that rain garden was, that wouldn't function very well, it was too low in elevation, it was just above the coastal jurisdiction line, which is essentially the high tide line, it only provided about a foot between the bottom of the basin and groundwater, so it wasn't enough room for that, to infiltrate and treat the stormwater. So what we've done is we're proposing to extend that landscape wall straight across, and in place where that landscape wall previously took a turn, we're proposing some subsurface 24-inch concrete galleries that are set three feet above the coastal jurisdiction line, so the bottom's now at five, bottom of the stone's at five, bottom of the chamber, I believe it's five and a half. So the top of the chamber is actually at eight, I believe, actually seven and a half, and the stone above that is at eight, so that allows stormwater to infiltrate and be treated in the material. The other addition is this retaining wall that we're showing here, the retaining wall varies between, well, it's as low as about two and a half foot tall wall in the highest point of existing grade, up to about seven feet where it ties into the landscape wall. The purpose of this wall, obviously there's no improvements on this side other than the septic system, but the Markuses, as I mentioned, own 31 Money Point Road, and they have seen in this area the tidal fluctuations, the flood fluctuations, and they're concerned that there's potential for this road and this portion of the property to continue to erode, it's their belief that it has already eroded slightly, they haven't documented it, there's no, they haven't gone out there and done survey work on it, but they have seen it through some of the tidal fluctuations and some of these storm events, and so what they want to do is install this retaining wall to protect not only their primary residence at 31 Money Point, but also stabilize the property that they have here. One last piece is, I've included a phasing plan, and I think this is important because the phase one is, when the Marcus, when Mitch came to talk to me first about this, he owns the property at 31 Money Point Road, he doesn't want to build this house right now, but he does want to protect, he does want to install the walls so he can protect this property, protect the road, so the phase one, what we're looking to get approved for is the construction of those landscape wall, the landscape wall and the retaining wall, and then in the future, potentially a single-family home. So we're looking to stabilize the property, to stabilize, to protect his property, to this property as well, and that, I believe, is it. So it's the landscape wall modification, the stormwater modification, and the proposed retaining wall. So we do have some comments from town staff, SLR, the coastal consultant, and DEP, essentially what we expected. what we expected. CEO, town, CEO didn't have any comments. The building official didn't have any comments. The town planner and the town engineer commented that the stormwater management improvements are an improvement over the previously approved plan, meets town regulations. SLR's letter, as I'm sure you saw, commented that this as proposed is approvable, although there are potential alternatives. The Markuses and I discussed those alternatives, you know, before we even put together the plan, we came up with what we wanted to accomplish, what we desired for the property. So this is what our desired outcome would be. That's why we're proposing the wall, the retaining wall, as you see it here, and not an alternative. As SLR's letter says, states, this, this is outside the V-zone, so the wall and the fill is approvable, as you see here. The DEP, as you would expect, say they don't want anything, any walls, they don't want fill, that's against their coastal policies. However, they're, again, advisory, that's, they don't want it, but it's not that it can't be there, it's just they don't want it there. So we're, we think the, the improvements to the landscape wall, which is an improvement to the, the stormwater management system, and the, and the retaining wall are an improvement to the property and also protects his, his primary residence. So with that, I think we can open up to any questions you might have.
Can you remind me what the retaining material that will be used for the retaining wall?
So the, the wall itself?
Yeah.
So I, we have specified either a modular block wall or a concrete wall. There's a detail on here for a modular block wall. It does say that a structural engineer has to design that. And the reason being, the wall can't have an underdrain within 50 feet of the septic system that's below the septic elevation. So the underdrain is set above the septic system. So a portion of the wall won't have any underdrain, so a structural engineer has to take a look at that. And if they have to go with a concrete wall for stabilization purposes or the modular wall will work. I left it open as a note on here that a structural engineer has to take a look at it to decide what wall is the most appropriate.
And if it's a concrete wall, will there be any kind of facade on it or will it just be a straight concrete?
I'm, we didn't get into aesthetics of that yet.
Right on the wall there? Okay.
I have a question, if I can. I see here in the, you know, the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection letter here, they do mention that they feel that there might be, you know, feasible less environmentally damaging alternatives and reasonable mitigation measures, techniques that could be considered as opposed to the wall. Have you considered those or had you any discussions with, with them?
Sure. So there's a couple of different varieties. There's a lot of ways to skin the cat, as they say. I think one big improvement that DEP isn't considering in this is the stormwater management improvements. The stormwater management, as previously designed, wouldn't function very well, wouldn't cleanse the water, it wouldn't allow infiltration. But in order to install a system that's at a higher elevation to allow that cleansing, we need the wall to put the stormwater system behind there. So to, to tie that wall, to tie our concrete wall, excuse me, to tie our concrete wall into our landscape wall, if we don't, I'm sorry, if we don't tie our concrete wall into our landscape wall, it's going to leave the edge of that landscape wall exposed. So the point of this return on the concrete wall is to prevent any scour from behind the wall, hopefully to tie into the building. So if that, if the concrete wall is at a lower elevation or is not there, the landscape wall could potentially become compromised. So it all kind of works together, partially for the stormwater management improvements, partially for stabilizing the property. So the alternative would be potentially a sloped revetment or a, a living filter, a living wall. But by doing that, it would slope further back into the property and it would leave that landscape wall exposed, which would eliminate, if we couldn't put the wall in, we can't put the landscape wall there, we can't put the stormwater system there. So it kind of all works together in this area particularly. Okay.
Any other questions of Mr. Mariah?
The deep letter is pretty strongly worded against this project.
There always, no, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say that. I very rarely see a, a letter that says we want it. Please proceed. But we do have the, the coastal consultant who was hired by the town, who reviewed it and said this is approvable as submitted in their, I think I'm biased in their review.
I just wonder how the previous plan, which you're saying is faulty.
Not necessarily faulty. I'm surprised that got through the process.
How, same person probably approved that too.
Not necessarily faulty. There's a rain garden, it meets the storage requirements, it probably wouldn't infiltrate, but it holds the volume in, in this, in the contours in this rain garden. I'm sure it holds the volume for that one-inch storm event. How quickly that seeps into the underlying soil and how much separation distance there is, it's, personally, I don't think it's enough. It should be, it should be three feet in order to cleanse that stormwater.
Right.
But a rain garden is an improvement over not-
Right. Right.
Any further questions? I have just one question. The title sheet indicates that Lorero is the surveyor on the property, yet the existing condition plan is certified by an engineer.
Sure. So actually, this is my, oh, correct, I probably should change that. It's my site preparation and demolition plan.
Yeah.
There is an A2 survey that was prepared by Lorero, sheet one of one, that's separate in the file.
Okay.
That's the plan that I used to develop my-
My only point is, it should be included with the set that's filed.
Sure.
And that should be a condition, that we're approving a set tonight that doesn't have that element in it. We're relying heavily on the survey here.
Sure.
And that A2, T2 survey, which I imagine is correct.
Correct. That was what was prepared, the wetlands are flagged prior to the 20, the, the May 2023 application that was before you. Okay, we can, we can-
Were they the original engineer on this project?
They were.
Okay, so that has to be included with the set that's reported. And, you know, raised stamp, a lot of signature, okay?
You know, I'm just getting kind of hung up on the fact that it could be a cement wall. How tall?
It varies between, I think, three feet and-
Seven, I think you said?
Seven feet where it ties into the landscape wall.
And it would just be a cement wall? Just cement?
Cement form or the modular block?
With no exterior landscaping, so you would just see the cement walls, is that what you're telling me?
Yes, unless we veneer it in some way.
Ah, would you consider veneering it in some way?
Shouldn't have said that. Mitch is with us tonight. I'm sure if it's required.
I mean, a seven-foot cement wall hanging out with the water is, is-
So this, let me just point out, so it is, yes, it is on the water.
Really not steadily appealing at all.
However, it's on the cove.
Technically, it's concrete, that's what.
Yeah.
Oh, cement, I'm sorry.
So it's on the cove, so as you can see here, it's, it's in an inlet, it's not exposed out along on sun. There's a, it is in a cove.
Uh huh.
So it's not, it's not like it's, look at me from the, from the ocean. It's tucked back into a cove, so.
Could you, just out of curiosity, could you, instead of making it just flat concrete, make it sort of stamped so it looks like rock?
Sure.
Like, or-
Something like that.
Or veneer or rock?
Not even necessarily veneer. I don't know if veneer, you know, because the, the purpose of the walls, I understand it is really to protect, right? But if it's stamped rock, then it would at least not look so industrial, I guess.
Yeah, I'm sure that's something we can explore options with the contractor to see if there's something we can do to dress up the face of that, so it's not just, it doesn't look like a foundation wall.
Was that, maybe the owner wants to speak of that?
Mitch, would you like to say a few words?
You won't be able to stamp it. I mean, you could build something into the form that would create, you know, some texture in the wall.
I think ideally, they would like a modular block wall. I think that's what he's discussed with the contractor. However, if the structural engineer says it can't be done that way, then we can, if we have to explore a solid wall, there's a veneer or some sort of, I believe.
Yeah, we, first of all, just Mitch Marcus, live at 31 Money Point Road.
Good evening.
Are we talking waterside or are we talking landside for this?
Waterside, as I understand.
Waterside, yeah. I mean, putting a veneer on it is, you know, can, it's not going to double the cost, but it's a huge, it's a huge financial-
I'm not interested in the finance.
All right, well, I am. That's, that's, that's a big, that's a big cost to add, just so that a boulder in a, in a cove that's not very common.
Unfamiliar with Money Point, though it is, yep.
Right. This is not, it's, it's, that's the backside of the cove. I, it, I'm happy to explore, like, stamping it, putting some sort of stamp on the concrete and trying to dress it up that way. But I think asking us to double the cost of a wall for the waterside, that's not even, you know, this is not Ender's Island wall, this is a two-to-four-foot wall in a-
I think seven feet, two to seven.
Okay.
And what was the length of the wall?
I don't know, like, in the application somewhere. I forget, might be, you know, let me see. Could scale it off quickly for you.
But you would be amenable to looking into some kind of stamp on the concrete, so it wouldn't just be as sheer?
Yeah, and also, should I also mention that on the waterside, it is in, there is vegetation there. So the, and we have to, we have to kick back, right, Seamus, from a certain amount from the vegetation. So the vegetation is going to end up covering-
Partially covering some of the wall.
Partially covering, I mean, if you go look at it now, the vegeta, during the summer months, which is when everybody's boating, it's pretty heavy there. And we have to step it back from that vegetation in order to be-
I think there's ways that the concrete contractor, if it is in fact concrete, can introduce texture on the wall with inserts in the form. It's not going to add a lot of cost if it is a concrete wall.
Yeah.
There's, you know, you see it on, you see it on bridge above us all the time, where vertical texture is, is introduced. And it, it, it's a lot easier to take than, than, you know, a monolithic-
Right.
Seven-foot high wall.
Right.
It would break it up. I agree with you. And I don't think it would introduce a lot of cost.
No, and I think the vegetation would break it up too.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the combined effect of the two. But I, I don't think it's going to introduce a huge amount of cost. These are inserts that go in the form and, you know, it would be the cost of the insert and, and I don't think it's going to be absorbent.
I, I only have a 10 scale on this one, but I guess it's about 140 feet.
A hundred and forty feet.
Yeah, but that's not-
At seven foot tall.
No, that's incorrect. It's not all seven feet tall. There's only one small section that's seven feet tall or ties into the landscape wall. The rest is between, like I said, three to five and a half. Between three and six is the, is most of the wall.
Okay.
And there's a, yeah, so it's not, it's not all seven feet tall.
10%?
It's seven feet tall.
Yeah. 20%?
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions of the applicant's representative? Clifton, any comments?
Nothing that hasn't already been shared. We don't, I don't see a problem necessarily. Deep usually always is against walls in any form, so.
Right.
We, I understand and anticipated this response.
Any further comments, Clifton? No? Okay. What's the commission's pleasure on the application of M. Marcus?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the application of M. Marcus as submitted with the following recommendations. Number one, any proposed alterations or modifications to the approved site plan as a result of comments from the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, CTD, shall be subject to review and approval by the town engineer, town planner, and commission as necessary. Two, final plans shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town engineer. Number three, the final plan shall include a, the set of A2, T2 surveys, I believe is what you asked.
Correct.
Okay. And number four, that the applicant shall explore the use of modular, modular block wall with, or with stamps to introduce texture to the concrete wall.
Explore or execute?
Well, shall execute a, execute a texture to the-
Shall modify the design.
To modify the design.
To include texture.
Is that acceptable? Is that stipulation?
Sure.
Okay. Those are the four stipulations.
I have one more on the back page.
Oh, sure. I missed it. Oh, apologies. And so that was one, two, three, four, five. Prior to the issuance of a zoning permit, the final plan shall be signed by the commission and recorded in the town's land evidence records.
Motion made to approve with five stipulations, I said?
Five stipulations.
By Ryan. Thank you, Ryan. Is there a second?
Second motion.
Seconded by Gary. Thank you, Gary. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Anyone opposed?
I'm opposed.
One, Commissioner voted opposed, Commissioner Morrison. And any extensions? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to the next item under old business, item D, Latimer Point Condo Association. This is item for the installation of a 144 square foot shed. Is this the annual application that comes?
I was going to say, yeah.
Yeah. It comes in every year. Ed Lally usually doesn't come in. Is there anyone here from the association?
Nope. He's out of town.
Okay. So you have all the plans and the adjustments to, the condo is treated like one lot, apparently.
This is, this is an easy one. Normally, there's multiple different factors that go on. This is really just the installation of a shed this year. There was a minor comment from the town engineer that I think can be reviewed and approved, but overall, this was very small scale in contrast to what typically comes from Latimer Point.
He does a magnificent job of this. It's a lot of work. Any other comments on this, Clifton?
No, sir.
Any questions of the board on the, of Clifton on the application?
No.
If not, what's your pleasure on the application of Latimer Point Condo Association?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the CAM, CAM application from Latimer Point Condo Association as submitted with the following two stipulations. Number one, final plan shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town engineer. And number two, prior to the issuance of a zoning permit, the final plan shall be signed by the commission and recorded in the town's land evidence records.
Does that include both the CAM and the site plan application?
There's just a CAM application, I see, or is there separate?
It's just a CAM.
Yeah, just a CAM. Okay. A motion to approve with two stipulations by Ryan. Thank you, Ryan. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Lynn. Thank you, Lynn. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Anyone opposed? Motion, any extensions? No extension, the motion passes. Item E, Lucky Dog LLC Site Plan Application for the Utilization of Existing Space for K-9 Training in Condition. See Garbo is the applicant. Evening.
I have a, I'm Catherine Garbo. I'm the owner of Lucky Dog LLC. I submitted a site plan to open a small training and canine conditioning facility at 163 South Broad Street.
Anyone have any questions of the applicant?
Just out of, oh, sorry, go ahead. What's canine conditioning?
Like physical therapy for dogs? Would there be any use of the exterior, exterior to the building? Just, just inside? Within the building? Yep. Is this building ready to veterinarian?
No, it's right across the street here. It used to be the old dance studio on the corner.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I was getting confused. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
How many dogs would you have on premise at any one time?
So the, the majority would be one-on-one training with me and the owner and the dog. And then I will have small group classes, up to eight dogs max. um, and then I will have small group classes, up to eight dogs, max, which would be later in the evening, it wouldn't really be during work hours, because people are working, so, so, yeah, eight, max, I don't see it ever, if you're seeing going even up to eight, but.
Okay, and again, all inside?
Inside, correct.
Just out of curiosity, I'm not too familiar with the location, any concern from the neighbors?
No, I reached out to, um, the neighbors that we share a wall with, they are, it's key real estate, they use it as a satellite office. I told them that most of the training that would be happening would be like the one-on-one, um, they use the, that office if somebody is there during regular business hours, um, so they haven't seemed too concerned about it. Okay, yeah.
Any comments, Clifton?
Nope, the only, um, comment I noted is just the parking element, um, and the, and what was provided, we provided the sheet from the original approval for the entire strip mall here, um, the dance studio was allocated six of those spaces at max with the eight, it would be up to eleven spaces per the regulations, but given the timing and given how many vacancies there are in spaces next door, there's not going to be a parking issue.
Can I just ask that, a couple of years ago, we had another business come forward, just a little bit further down the street with dogs, dog training and whatnot.
Yeah, we did.
We had to change, we didn't change the zoning, but there was a lot of discussion as to whether that activity was allowed in the zoning, is there any gray area here with that at all?
Uh, no, not in terms of the zoning and the uses, no.
Okay, thank you.
Right, there was, whether it was a permitted use or not.
Exactly.
Kind of rolls common, yeah.
Yeah.
Typically, the way the commission has operated these before is that every change in use in a strip mall requires a reallocation of its, all of its parking area, um, that's actually a little obtuse way to approach it, so I've just been, uh, going through the standard procedure that you've already adopted, but for something like this, where it's a business sh, changing in and out, typically, I wouldn't process those, and those would be a simple zoning permit, um, it's just because in this case, it's a specialized commercial use that we've done it this way, but, um, for these strip mall parking lots, all of that should be already previously allocated based on the use, so having the parking discussion was a little difficult for me and Catherine itself.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant from the board? Hearing none, what's the commission's, uh, pleasure on the application of Lucky Dog LLC?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the site plan application of Lucky Dog LLC as submitted with no stipulations.
Motion from Ryan to approve as submitted, no stipulations, thank you, Ryan, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Lynn, thank you, Lynn. All in favor of the application?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, Gary, you go back?
Yep.
Anyone opposed? Any extensions? The application passes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck. Next item on the agenda is, uh, CAM application of Ocean Community YMCA, S. Britner? I'm sorry, that's postponed to October 1st, I apologize. In fact, the next two items are as well, correct?
Correct.
Brings us to public hearings. Do we have to read the advertisement here, Clifton?
We don't have to read an advertisement.
I have such nice bold print.
You can. We don't have to.
Go ahead, Lynn, if you want.
No, no, it's quite all right.
Okay, so the next, the first public hearing, uh, and all the regular members are seated for, uh, this item as well, um, is, uh, the application PZ 241-8RA, G. Development LLC, S. Shirensia, zoning text amendment application. Evening, sir, again.
Good evening, um, I believe that, uh, G. Development, uh, their attorney has requested to, uh, postpone this, or is that, I thought he had contacted you to, um, to continue this matter. Uh, Attorney Michael Carey represents, uh, G. Development, he couldn't be here this evening, and I, I thought that.
Do you wish to make that request?
I, I need to verify.
I believe the request is to open it and keep, open the public hearing and continue.
Continue it to next month.
Okay.
Yes. That request was made by the applicant's attorney. And I believe it was, it was in an email, I, I can bring it up, Clifton, if you need
to. No, I, I remember it.
Yeah.
So the, the hearing's actually open, you just have to continue it, right?
Correct, the, you would open the hearing and then continue.
Have you already opened here?
And then how many days would we have?
The public hearing has to be closed by the twenty-second without extension, so that's two October meetings.
Okay. And that is what, that is the applicant's request.
Correct.
Right, so, so the hearing is open, and now we need a motion to continue.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to continue, uh, the hearing for G. Development.
Motion by Ryan to continue this to our next session?
To our next session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Lynn, thank you, Lynn. Uh, all in favor of the motion to continue to the next session?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, anyone opposed? Any extensions, the motion passes to continue. Brings us to the second public hearing, can stay right where you are. It's, uh, AG Trust LLC, application PZ 242-1RA, uh, Representative S. Shirensia, zoning text amendment application for revision to ZR, ZR.
Sir, great. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, for the record, once again, Sergio, Shirensia with Shirensia and Associates, my client AG Trust has applied for a zoning text amendment, um, relatively straightforward, uh, we met with, uh, both your planning, your planner and your zoning official, um, my client desires to, at the, uh, actually property located what's known as Mystic Landing, Forty Masons Allen Road, it's not the subject of this application, but it does impact it, and that is what prompted our request for this zoning text amendment. He currently operates and is approved for a medical spa there, um, that he operates on the, uh, the third floor, and is looking to expand. When we went to review that expansion, um, we identified, uh, in the code, um, whether it was something that was, uh, an oversight or not, um, that surgical procedures were not included in what the youth, the approved, in the use for a medical office. As such, we found that, uh, the definition of a hospital, uh, obviously allows for surgical procedures on an outpatient basis, and actually wellness centers do as well in the definition. So, um, elevating, uh, a medical center or a medical clinic to allow for those services seemed appropriate, but obviously that's what this, uh, commission will opine on this evening. I, uh, I did, uh, submit, um, some impact statement, um, regarding this application, it seemed appropriate, we, uh, we did, uh, meet with staff, and they seemed to think that this would probably be the path of least resistance, um, to include surgical, um, procedures on an outpatient basis, uh, we're basically taking the definition that's located in hospital, and the definition that's in a wellness center, and just transposing that into medical, uh, medical.
Are they exactly the same?
Exact same verbatim, uh, text.
For both, the hospital and the wellness center?
Correct.
Exactly the same, okay.
That's correct, and we would like that apply also to a medical center. Um, the thing that I think, uh, is most compelling is that, uh, we, you had a lengthy discussion about your comprehensive plan, um, and, uh, just find it here, um, the plan of conservation and development under section ten point three recommends retainage, support, and encouragement of business development, specifically, it says to work with local businesses to assure their expansions take place in town whenever possible. They would like to expand this, uh, this business, uh, as a, it's cure men, men spa, they do, uh, different types of, uh, spa procedures, but, um, things that are non-invasive surgically, um, they have a list of, of things I don't pretend to know about, but, uh, all different types of treatments that are less invasive than, than surgery that they're allowed to do there, that they're licensed to do, they would also be licensed to have, to do, the surgical procedures which they intend to do, which is largely going to be, uh, plastic surgery type, type things. So, that is the request, um, in, uh, that they could very generally, uh, a, a straightforward and, um, appropriate, uh, text amendment to medical clinics so that they can remain under that use, and to expand their services that they provide at their med spa. So that is, uh, my presentation, uh, relatively straightforward, uh, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Questions from the commission? Thank you, sir.
I'm just, I'm just a little confused, so, I'm, I'm reading this, and what the proposed text says is, is one-on-one with hospital and medical clinic until you get to the last line, injury, deformity, or physical condition for the treatment of both medical and surgical care on an outpatient basis, and then down below, three different base definitions covering medical services, it, it says, and this is in the existing definitions, it says, for treatment of both medical and surgical care on an outpatient, patient basis, and equipped for, uh, conductive support and other customary leisure activities for rehabilitation and wellness maintenance. It's already there.
They, they want to add the surgical, the medical and surgical care on an outpatient basis to medical clinic. Clearly, so that wording is not in that one, and so that's what they're, they wanted to, yeah, thank you.
All clear now?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Is there any special, special, um, things to think about when doing, uh, surgical care, both medical and surgical care on outpatient basis, so, I don't know.
Such as air discharges or anything like that?
Ambulances, things like that, that perhaps the various buildings would not be, or locations would not be appropriate for?
Well, that would be a specific application, right? You, you're not being asked to do that now, if an application comes in, you'd have to look at those things, you know?
If I may?
Yes.
There will be an application before you, I believe, next month, that will have a specis, excuse me, a specific ask to include an expansion of this building on its second and, and first floors for, um, the medical spa and the, and the surgical procedure rooms.
Well, so, you, you may have a commissioner that's concerned about that.
Well, we can.
Totally separate.
It's specific.
But the specific, we will address.
Yes.
To, to appease your.
So that would be site-specific.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else with questions? Clifton, any comments?
Nope, the only comment that I have that I put in the report is kind of what you're raising, Lynn, is that you have three definitions to cover the same big core concepts. Luckily, on September twenty-fifth, we're doing that in-person workshop on commercial and industrial uses, so this is a great time to talk about that, so.
Okay.
Yeah, those, I had no comments, this is more clarifying the existing use as approved under that special use permit, and changing the definition to support it.
Any other, uh, comments or questions from the board on this before we open it up to the public? Hearing none, I don't have anyone signed up to speak, but, uh, having said that, anyone who wishes to comment on this application can come forward, uh, you know, state your case, and, uh, the applicant will have time for rebuttal if he disagrees with anything you raise. You can speak for or against, or, or just make a general comment. No one wishing to speak? Hearing once, hearing twice? Uh, any additional comments before we close the public hearing, Sergio?
No, sir.
Okay, what's the commission's pleasure on, uh, closing the public hearing, or is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close this public hearing for, uh, AG Trust.
Motion to close the AG Trust LLC public hearing, made by Ryan, is there a second?
A second motion.
Seconded by Gary, thank you, Gary, uh, all in favor of the motion to close?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, anyone opposed? Any extensions? Motion to close passes. What's the commission's pleasure on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the, uh, application, uh, for the zoning regulations text amendment as submitted.
Motion approved, made by Ryan as submitted, uh, is there a second?
I just.
Well, before we discuss, I ask you, sir.
Oh, sorry.
I second the motion.
Seconded by Gary, now, Lynn, please.
You know, I feel that there's a big difference between a hospital, a medical clinic, and a wellness center, I, I, they're kind of not the same thing in my mind, and I'm just, yeah, I keep on reading this over and over, because fundamentally, there is a difference between a hospital and a wellness center, and I'm uncomfortable making them all the same definition and with their uses, um, and I don't know the history as to why we have a wellness center versus a medical clinic versus a hospital, but certainly, there is a difference between those three things, yes? Maybe you can tell me.
Well, I'd say the, the real distinction in the existing definitions is that the hospital use is for the overnight stay in addition to, um, that's traditionally what separates a hospital from any other sort of medical clinic, is the inpatient versus outpatient procedures, so as the definition existing, stands existently, you would be allowed to do the house or night in a hospital, whereas you're not allowed to do that in what's being proposed for a medical clinic and for a wellness center, so that's the real distinction between the two. The concern that I raised in the comments, or in the report, is that there's really no substantial difference between a medical center and a wellness center, not only in terms of function, but in terms of the definitions.
And license, right?
And licensing, it just, it seems a little, it seems a little outdated, and there are multiple terms running around, um, but keeping the concept of a hospital separate from a medical center, I would agree, and I don't think that's the point of this application, because it doesn't include the overnight stay capacity.
But would it include something like, uh, knee replacement, where you go in at ten o'clock and get out at three?
Sure considered outpatient.
Sure it is.
So, and outpatient? Okay.
And of course, all of those, for each individual application, are going to have its own specific licensing requirements anyways.
Right, totally.
So all of that's going to be covered.
Okay, and you may get rid of one of these things, okay, got it.
Thank you.
I just need to talk through the group.
No, I didn't say what you're saying, what's getting me is the wellness center, but that's a different thing.
Exactly.
And that could be under next week's, you know, discussion.
The motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the text amendment?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, anyone opposed? Any extensions? The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Can you come forward, Ben, it's, there's no PA system in here, it's.
No, it's just a, I heard, I wonder where the, uh, the gentleman mentions, uh, October first meeting, it doesn't show up on the town calendar, on the website. October first. October first, first Tuesday?
Correct.
And that should be a meeting, right?
Yep, it'll be.
It's just not on the calendars, they're not on the.
All clear?
Understood.
Thank you.
Everybody taking a look at, uh, the, uh, future public hearings and new submissions? Any comments? Any comments? If not, uh, I think the appropriate motion under item 11 is in order.
Mr. Motion, or, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Seconded by Gary. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.